All right, good evening everyone on this beautiful evening. I would like to call the Hudsonville Public Schools Board of Education regular meeting for June 8th to order. First on the agenda, we have approval of our agenda. A motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move in.
Motion from Mark?
Support.
Support from Ken, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Agenda is approved. First up, we have our board recognition, Dr. Vanderjacks.
So I'm thrilled to report that we had a very successful weekend last weekend. Once again, we enter our June board meeting with recognizing some amazing student athletes and their performance on the court last Saturday evening at Calvin University. So I'd like to turn it over to Aaron Wedge, who is coming up now, to talk a little bit about the success of the, and the length maybe of our boys volleyball team, who cannot seem to lose. At least, they haven't.
You're gonna jinx over here.
For the next seventeen years, they will continue to... Turn it over to Mr. Wedge, talk about our volleyball team. So, Mr. Wedge?
Thank you, Dr. Vanderjacks, for that. Nice entrance for the boys volleyball. Yeah, we, so Hudsonville Boys tried to begin the year in 2020, the year it was COVID there, and that season got canceled. So, the next year, we got a team going and with help from some individuals at the school, Jason Paul Matier, who's been with me since the beginning of this, his son played. First season, there were nineteen teams that we played in, not the first season that boys volleyball existed in the state as a club sport, but the first season that we participated in, there were nineteen teams in the state. We ended up playing Lowell in the finals that year and ended up, we beat them in three sets or something like that, I can't remember off the top of my head. Then, last year, there were, it exploded again, there were thirty-seven teams in the state, so doubled. We ended up playing Grand Haven in the finals, went to five sets, and we won state tournament title last year. This year was the first year that they considered it an actual state title, because they felt like there were enough teams. There were fifty-six teams in the state this year. There are enough, there were enough teams so that they actually split it up into two divisions this year, so there was a Division One and a Division Two, strictly based, like other sports, on student population. Hudsonville was in Division One, very large school, and had another very successful season. We went twelve and oh in our conference and won our conference, and then proceeded to go through the postseason. We played Grand Haven on Saturday and beat them in three sets for the first official boys volleyball state title in Michigan, so really... There was one other thing that I noticed, they had us fill out what our overall record has been since we've had a team, and with the win on Saturday, the boys volleyball is now ninety and eleven over the last three years. So, we've worked hard.
Well, on behalf of the district, congratulations. I will tell you, I was fairly stressed out during the first two sets, but the third set, when you were up twenty to fifteen, I felt really good until Grand Haven rallied and got, went on an eight oh run in my stress level, because it was getting late. It was nearly ten o'clock, and at my age, I was tired. But thank you, boys, for pulling that out and winning the last set, so we didn't have to go into a fourth set. I did appreciate that.
Oh, yeah, and of all, and my wife, thank you for everything that you do, and I'm sure there's lots of people that I could thank, but especially her, for everything that she does, and with doing the concessions and running the, reminding me of everything that I forget and all those types of things, and with three small kids, running them everywhere when I can't do it with coaching. I'm glad that she's supportive of me coaching and supportive of the boys, and they all enjoy going to her classroom, even though they're probably not supposed to go there most of the time, but they all enjoy seeing her throughout the day.
Well, if that's okay, we'd like to recognize the boys present, and I can come down with certificates for them, and I'll let you call up, I have a list here, and you can do it by order.
Okay, let's see, I have them written number order, so...
Wow, they are a smart group, I can tell you that.
Uh, yes, I'm going to do that, but that'll be after I announce everybody. So, why don't you guys stand up and come down, come down the aisle? Thank you. Uh, so, even though they don't have their numbers, number one, number Jenkins. Number two, Perpetinus. Number five, Aiden Bigelow. Number six, Noah Stroud. Number eight, Diego Hill. Number nine, Seth Jenkins. Number ten, Alan Davidson. Number eleven, Logan Hipshider. Number twelve, Jonas Stroud. Number seventeen, Carter DeYoung. Number twenty-one, Ryder Roberts. Number twenty-three, Landon Dykema. So I have a couple, before we get out of here, there's a couple of things that I want to talk about with these guys. Will Jenkins Twins, Stroud Twins, and Aiden step forward, so they can see you? So, these players were on JV for pretty much most of the year. Aiden Bigelow, who's right there, came up and worked on varsity on some, with some stuff throughout the year, but when the season ended, when the JV season ended, these were the players, and there's one more who's not here tonight, these were the players that I brought up to practice with us as we went on in the postseason. There are nine guys on varsity, so we can't really practice full court against each other because you need twelve, so these were the kids that I asked to come up, be part of the varsity team as we went through, because we needed people to practice against and with, so they did a great job, playing hard against us in practice every day, and definitely contributed to making us better, so thank you guys for that. Will, Caven's not here. Will Parker and Carter, will you guys step forward? Parker and Carter received all-conference honorable mentions this year. Diego, Ryder, Landon, Logan, and then Caven is not here. The five of them, there's four here, the five of them received first-team all-conference this year. Will, and they don't know this, so this is, this is brand-new news for everybody, will Diego, Landon, and Ryder step forward? Landon received second-team all-state. And Caven Ryder, Caven Ryder and Diego received first-team all-state. I'm super excited for next year, thank you all for your hard work.
I can tell you my numbers, four numbers on the back, apparently you do number order.
Okay, next up, we have our recognition of visitors and hearing of people present. And Dr. Vanderjacks is getting the screen set up. Our first speaker is Aaron Doobie.
Greetings, board. I'm not normally that guy, but I feel I need to give a content warning, because some people may think what I'm about to say is inappropriate. Mr. Nick Bolheys, it was wonderful to see you this weekend watching our girls' water polo team. If y'all haven't heard yet, you'll learn more at upcoming meeting, day two won in the state championships, it was their sixth in a row. It was amazing, was a great thing to celebrate. The next day, I got to celebrate a group of guys and their accomplishments at a combined open house, five of them, which I'd never seen before, but we had a great time, it was a pleasure seeing a lot of you there, and we got to see Dr. Vanderjacks and her husband up on the stage. Now, that seems like a pretty innocuous little blurb there, right? No, I didn't notice anyone being offended, but did you notice it had gender identity? It had orientation, and it even had someone choosing an identity other than what's on their birth certificate. Yet there were no gasps, I've seen no shocked faces or performative tears, and I don't think anyone has yelled from the crowd that I am a pedophile. That's because those topics aren't sexually explicit or inherently political like some would have you believe. The thing is, most people don't want to be known as a bigot, or hateful, or anything like that, so most don't come straight out and say they hate LGBTQ plus people, or that they think they're an abomination, or against the very fabric of our nation. Unfortunately, I witnessed all of those things being said in our community recently, but of course, it was prefaced with, "I don't hate you, but..." Because even when saying hateful things in public, they don't want to be seen as hateful. Instead, they build controversy and label things as political and sexual, so now in their story, they aren't a homophobic villain, they're protecting kids. The end result is still the same harmful discrimination either way, but one way, they think they're the hero, all while conveniently ignoring the very real harm they inflict on our kids. So I encourage all of you to reject that type of bigotry in disguise, and be the true heroes and leaders you were meant to be, that our kids need you to be. And as you celebrate the end of the year, make sure you are celebrating all kids, and as you look forward to next year, make sure you are looking forward to making it a place where all children are safe and celebrated for who they are, and not a place where the discrimination of the few loud adults is amplified. Thank you.
Piper Juski.
Well, my name is Piper Juski, and I just finished fourth grade at Georgetown Elementary. I was here at the last school board work session with my mom, who was a teacher here at HHS. I heard when Ms. Skipper shared her opinion, was a teacher, no, that she would consider reading the book Jarhead with her son and talking about it, I thought it was, I thought that it was really nice that she and her son could read and talk about a book together. Then, some people made rude comments and sounds after she had shared her opinion about Jarhead. I thought that it was very immature for adults to be making loud and rude comments about a teacher who shared that she would consider spending quality time with her own child, reading and discussing a book that some people don't like. I feel like some people are forgetting that we have freedom to make choices about what is important to ourselves. We should focus on the main issue of letting students, with the help of their important adults, decide for themselves what they want to read or not read. Parents have rights, and so do students. If there is a book that they do not like, they can just put it back. Maybe I would like that book. You don't get to decide for me what I like, that is the best part of our freedom, we each get to make choices for ourselves. In conclusion, I hope we can allow each other to make their choices and not criticize them for doing that. I hope all of the adults in this community, young and old, can do a better job of listening, being kind, and considering what other people have to say. Thank you.
I'd just like to say that I agree, we're all entitled to our personal and our family beliefs. The difference is, this is school, and we have three hundred, our three thousand four hundred sixty-three families here in Hudsonville, schools, and many are Christian. There seems to be a persistent opinion that Christianity can't exist in the public school, but there've always been Christian families in public schools, and it's perfectly acceptable. Christians train their children to love and honor God as their creator, and to follow the Bible, and we follow the Bible cheerfully, because we believe it shows the way of full life. In God's Son, Jesus Christ, we find truth, forgiveness, freedom, direction, hope, peace, and Jesus shows us the way to love all people just as He does. Others may put their hope in new ideologies, but Christians do not. We look to Jesus. Just as a family who follows vegetarianism can send their kid to school and trust that they will not be pressured to give their beliefs up about their food, the school must focus on academics and lead the way in being quietly accepting and respectful, respectful of every child's family values. LGBT ideology and the notion of white supremacy are being promoted in schools throughout the nation. Families are free to hold these beliefs, but the school administration and staff must lead the students in being quiet and respectful toward the many worldviews held by families and children. Students must not be compelled to adopt other worldviews at school. I've heard Mr. Hawes say more than once that the board's main role is establishing policy. We will continue to have skirmishes at every board meeting until we have policies that restore trust in our school. We've been going round and round now for two years, please prioritize establishing policies that will deal with these recurrent issues concerning the religious liberty, the right to religious liberty, for all of our families. Thank you.
Michelle Juski.
Good evening. I was in attendance at the board's last work session in May and was extremely disheartened at much of the behavior I witnessed from the audience, and even from some of the members on this board during the discussion of the book Jarhead. The audience heckling, personal attacks, and dismissive tone of questions asked of district employees was extremely disappointing. I began teaching at HHS in the 2000, 2001 school year, and during my career, our district has had its share of ups and downs, but one of the things that has made this place special is our focus on relationships. I would like to encourage members of the board to keep this in mind as you work and interact with those who share your beliefs and those who may have differing viewpoints. As the chair of the social studies department here at the high school, I also believe that a quick look at some of our history might help give some backstory and understanding to those who currently have an issue with some of the books available in our media centers. Around roughly 2010, there was a push from our curriculum office and English department to increase the number of classroom libraries, providing a variety of books for different groups of readers, and an overall focus on encouraging choice reading. Our professionals today are working within the parameters of their training, department decisions, and district, community, and state guidelines. They are living in the reality created by those previous individual and collective decisions. It's not wrong or right, it's just the reality. It is also reality that the people currently working in our, in positions like assistant superintendent of curriculum, district library specialist, and our English teachers are faithfully executing their job expectations and frankly, doing their level best for kids every day. These employees are also working to ensure that students have the freedom to make choices for themselves, their interests, and their individual learning experiences. I would encourage board members, current board members, to remember a couple of things. One, all of our staff members are doing the best they can for each of our students on a daily basis. Two, people working in positions today might not have an explanation for why something is not happening, or why that thing is actually happening. Be writing them with rude questions and comments, or stay silent when community members verbally attack or belittle them will not change that fact, and it is mean and uncalled for. Three, presume positive intentions. Perhaps the reason someone doesn't know the answer to a question is not because they're withholding information, but instead, because they actually just don't know. Understanding this might lead you to finding the person who does have the information you desire. Many of those working in these positions today were not responsible for books purchased over a decade ago. If there is a genuine desire for understanding, the board could perhaps ask if any of the people who were in those roles at that time would be willing to further answer questions you might have. Paul Narragon and Linda Booby worked as the head librarians in our media center, and Cynthia Davis was the previous English chair, uh, English department chair. Maybe one or each of these individuals might have direct knowledge of the reasoning behind why certain books were purchased then, and be able to fully answer your questions now. Perhaps those retired HBS employees would be willing to answer an email or come to a work session and answer some of the questions board members have. Our mission is to work together to help foster the development, encouragement, the growth of all students. Thank you.
Fenicia Kyle.
Happy last day of school and Pride Month. I'm speaking on this as it comes to light some very concerning issues that need to be addressed. Two board members didn't read ISD candidates' emails, applications, which they admitted openly at a public meeting. You didn't do your job, then you admitted it. Mr. Chansky, Mr. Davis, you like to know, I would like to know why you think that's appropriate to come to your job and not do it. You wanted these positions, you need to do your job. Mr. Chansky, in light of your being voted into your position as treasurer under clearly questionable circumstances, I find your behavior appalling. You wanted this position, you continued to show ignorance and intolerance, and clearly, you follow your own agenda. Sir, you don't even have any children in this school anymore. You need to learn to listen. You had your chance to do your thing when your children were in school. Times, they are changing. Now, it's time for you to start learning and listening. You clearly have no idea what you're doing, or what all of our children need. Community members were privy to another misstep when hearing Mark Davis speak negatively about Mr. Bolheys to community members before the last work session regarding his vote that didn't align with his personal agenda. Sounds like Nick did his job. How is that a problem? I assure you, I didn't agree with Nick's next vote regarding the book Jarhead, but I assure Hal, respect him for making choices he believes is best for his and other people's children. Meanwhile, Mr. Davis, you blame both other board members and the superintendent for causing division within the board and community. Sir, you are a divisive member of this board. You've chosen to ignore growth within yourself and for the community, and you focused on your own agenda. You no longer represent our community effectively, nor with an open mind towards an inclusive school. Barb, this is your ill-gotten tenure as president, you need to re- rein in some of this. You need to make yourself vulnerable to listen and take criticism, as well as stop the finger pointing on this board. You desperately wanted this position, I expect you to step up and take control of the chaos that this current board is causing. I expect you to focus on the well-being and support of all staff and students and parents and our superintendent. I expect you to uphold your oath to our students, staff, and district, and expect that from the rest of the board, expect you to do that. One more thing, who refused to take a pin for LGBT plus? Oh, yeah, Chansky and Davis. Hey, to you I say, Happy Pride Month.
Next up on our agenda, we have our action items, we have our consent agenda. Beck can have a motion to support the consent agenda? Support from Dawn?
I'll support that.
Second from Mark. Any discussion or questions on the consent agenda?
Dr. Vanderjacks, I saw a realignment in the OK conferences, red stays the same. Any, just to look into the future about any perspective on where the red may go, or what changes we may anticipate, or just...
That's a great question, I would love to throw it to our athletic directors that are both at our regional championship soccer game right now, which we're all anticipating and trying to get to as quickly as we can. But I, I don't anticipate the realignment, which will always be challenging for districts that are moving around. The OK red will most likely stay the same, it will not affect Hudsonville, we're, we're solid into the red, as the third largest district in the red, actually the second largest district now in the red, so I don't anticipate it changing. The only difference is that I would say the bottom of the red, and I'm saying not bottom as in competition, but bottom as in size, Bayern Center continues to grow quickly, and that could impact their district and could also then have the conversations with Caligoni and Jensen, where they are size-wise. With that, you're probably talking five, six, seven years on the road.
Good, thank you.
Good question.
All right, any other questions on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Consent agenda is passed. Move on to our regular action agenda, and first up, we have our Park Elementary additions and renovations bid recommendations. Mr. Briggs?
Uh, thank you, President Hooper. This, the recommendation for, to approve the bids submitted for Park Elementary was reviewed in detail at the work session. We, we had a really nice group of bidders, there, there was one category that we needed to do some more work on, that's playground equipment, we're continuing to work on that, but really, no changes in the report recommendation from what was presented at the work session.
All right, so we'll resolve that the board approved the bid recommendations for Park Elementary additions and renovations for a total of seven million two hundred and three thousand nine hundred and sixty-six dollars, as presented by Mr. Briggs, Assistant Superintendent of Business and Finance. We have a motion on the table. Support?
Sumoed.
Support from Ken?
Support.
And from Nick. Okay, discussion or questions for Mr. Briggs? We did review this in the work session?
Yes.
All right, hearing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Park Elementary is approved.
Thank you.
Next up, we have our fitness and musical equipment bid recommendation.
Yes, thank you. With the assistance of OAK, they helped us, we really have four different categories here. There's cardio equipment, strength slash performance equipment, band instruments, and orchestra instruments. The, at the last, at the work session, this was all reviewed in detail at the worst work session, and there was a question from the work session for an additional graphic that incorporated the, just to show the layout of the cardio equipment, so that was added to the packet. Sornex did a nice job incorporating those pieces, I think it, it really shows how that facility has been approved, improved by the work of our new performance director, Mike Carbot. We've got a lot more workstations in there, it's just gonna be really, really good for our kids, not only strength-wise, but flexibility, performance-wise, it just should result in less injuries long-term, so hopefully that graphic shows, paints that picture, and as well with the band and orchestra instruments. It's a filling of some instruments for the new five, six building, an expansion of curriculum offerings for our sixth graders, and a little bit of backfilling of instruments in both band and orchestra for Riley and, and Baldwin as well, so that's, our recommendation is not changing, I just want to thank OAK for their help around that bid process, it was a big lift. It was a big lift, and got, got it done in time to get the school open and fall. So, thank you.
Okay, so we have resolved that the board approved the bid recommendation to purchase fitness and our equipment, and middle school musical equipment in the total of $986,730, as presented by Mr. Briggs, our Assistant Superintendent of Business and Finance. Good motion on the table. Support?
So moved.
Support from Nick, and second from Andrew. Questions for Mr. Briggs?
Did we talk about if this would be, the fitness equipment would be available to the public? What's the plan there?
So, we, we have internally. Normally, when we open a new facility, we have a waiting period, just to work out the best time for the students to use a facility, any facility. And then we make time available for the community. So, that, that work, that planning is already started, but it's, we're just gonna hold off for, normal for us to hold off for a year. It may go sooner, may take, may take a little longer, but that's, that's the plan.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Briggs? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion's approved.
Thank you.
Next up, we have human resource items. Ms. Ann Armstrong, we have quite a few.
Hello, everyone. I am 22. Certified staff members to bring to you today for a recommendation for hire. I just have to say before I start, a big thank you to all the staff that allowed us to come into their rooms for demos, all the principals who joined us, all the, the coaches, and just everybody, because there, there's a lot. And we did it, and I'm super excited to bring everybody here. So, I will start. So first, we have Lauren Pierce. Lauren is a recent GBSU grad. She, she's from the east side of the state. Her father was a longtime specialized EI Resource High School teacher. She knew from the get-go, around those family dinners, that this is what she wanted to do. So we're recommending her for Resource at Riley Middle School. Next, we have Colin. Colin Nakliz, Nakliz, Litzki, yep, I apologize Colin, but you can stand. Colin is, has several years, three years at Wyoming Public Schools, and he did a second and a third grade loop. That was kind of a cool thing that he has been doing, but really will be able to hone his craft. And he is being recommended for third grade at Jamestown Upper Elementary. Next, we have Brianna Brink. Brianna is coming to us right out of college. She graduated from Calen College, and she did a semester in Spain, which was a very unique and fun experience, and she is going to be teaching EL at the elementary level. Next, we have Christina Pixley, who is right there. And Christina is also a GBSU grad. She did student teaching in Holland Public, as well as in Grand Rapids. She, one of the things that impressed me with Christina immediately is when I went to shake her hand, I thought she broke mine. And she has a love of equestrian, and just, I just know that she's just gonna be such a hard worker. She's gonna be primarily at South Elementary for art, but also will be at Lower and Upper a little bit. Next, we have Garrett DeCracker. I don't know if you recognize that name, but he is an HPS grad, also went to Michigan State, and he loves the littles, and I love that he loves the littles. So he's gonna be at Bauer Elementary, and he came in and is so fired up, and I told him, I said, you know, I, I had no idea that you graduated from here, and I think that made him even more excited, you know? I just, I saw you so sparty, so that was good. Next, we have Olivia Nelson. And Olivia just graduated as well in December from Grand Valley, and then did a long-term kindergarten subbing position in Byron Center. Olivia, you have to talk to Olivia, because when you talk to her, you'll know she's a kindergarten teacher. I mean, it's like the most calming, sweetest voice ever, and she blew it away in the demo, so she's gonna do great. Next, we have Jenna Vanderplu. Jenna is coming to us with many years of experience in Kentland Public Schools as a MOSI teacher. She also taught at Byron Center, at Brown Elementary, and you know, she brought goodies to the interview, so I mean, like, why not? Next, we have Chloe Cavalli. Chloe is a Grand Valley grad. She also did a semester in Spain, you guys should compare notes, and she is going to be recommended for Spanish at the high school. Next, he's not here, is Jeffrey Hansen. Jeffrey Hansen is an HPS grad. He has been teaching music for the past seven years down in Cobert Public Schools. He's been teaching choir and band, and he's gonna be teaching choir at Baldwin Middle School, and then a few sections at the new 5'6" building. After that, we have Holly Hidma. Holly Hidma is a GBSU grad. Dave Van Nord often will come into my office, because with his work for Grand Valley, and will say, hey, I have one for ya. And he highly recommended Holly. She has a passion for problem-solving and students, so very excited about Holly. Next, we have Amal Shohati. Amal has 17 years of experience and 15 years of teaching experience in EL at Dearborn Public. Crazy story about Amal, she's not here, she lives in Illinois. She zoomed in for an interview. She came in person in one, and then zoomed in for an interview, and Hannah Lee, who we hired from Philadelphia, was in the interview. Hannah is a current teacher here from, for EL, and right before we went on, she goes, I need to tell you, I know Amal, I've taught with her in Dearborn. And then Amal comes on to the Zoom and is like, Hannah! I mean, it was so funny, but Amal is fantastic, and she also will be teaching elementary EL for our district. Next, we have Abby Bishop. Abby's a Hope grad. She's student taught in Grand Val, oh, there you are, I didn't know, yeah! Like that, okay. So anyway, so Abby's student taught, at, at, one of her students teaching with Alex in Georgetown, and she just blew them away at Georgetown. And then I got calls from her professors at Hope and said, you have to hire her, she's amazing. She's also a farmer, which I think is amazing, amazingly awesome. She was like, I said, hey, do you want to sub for us? And she was, I gotta go, I gotta go cover the farm for my parents, and I love that, so that's awesome. So she will be doing first grade at Almond Elementary. Next, we have Caitlin Vanderpier. Caitlin is coming to us from Sparta Public, where she taught second grade. She's a Jensen grad, Grand Valley grad, and just really thinks Hudsonville Public Schools where she wants to be, and we're excited, because she's gonna do a great job in second grade at Georgetown. Okay. Next, we have Allison Dan Dan. Allison, student taught two years ago with Jody Durham at Park Elementary and Kindergarten, and then this past year, she was a specialized para in, oh, actually, she started out as a building sub, and then she went into specialized para. She's just gonna jack up all trades at Park Elementary this year, and so when a third grade opening, a run at Park, McKinsey was like, well, let's go. So that's very exciting. Next, we have Phil Matthews. Phil is a HPS grad. He has been teaching for the last seven years at Kent Innovation Academy, for Kent ISB, and he, but is a familiar face, I'm sure you know him, because he has been working with our marching band for many years, and, and I said, he's a grad. And we're so excited, because he's taking on a challenge to be our next business teacher at the high school, so that will be fantastic. Next, we have Amanda Eaton. Amanda comes to us from Holland Public Schools. She has 16 years of resource experience, and she's gonna be teaching resource at the high school, and it's just, I mean, Mandy and I were like, Jordan, you're gonna love this person, here you go, go check her out. And then she came in, and she's like, yeah, I can do that, yeah, I can do that. And it was just like, she was born to come here and teach. And I have to say, this is a really cool thing, my mom hired her at Holland Public, and now I get to hire her for Hudsonville Public Schools. That's awesome. Okay. Next, we have Julie Barman. Julie, I have actually had the pleasure of working with before as well. She is a middle school math teacher, recommendation for Riley Street Middle School. She comes to us with 17 years of teaching experience, but since 2016, she's been at West Ottawa Public Schools, at Harvard Lights Elementary. She was the department chair, and when I called West Ottawa and said, hey, we're gonna take Julie, a good friend of mine said, that's my son's favorite teacher. And I went, great, thanks. Next, we have Krista Pamorski. Krista is coming to us as an art teacher since 2013. She has taught with Kellogg'sville. She's just a real natural, dynamic leader. We're very excited to see her in the art department at Bauer Elementary School. Next, we have Lydia Coleman. Wait, did I see? Okay. Lydia is a Hope grad. She did her first interview with me for a pre-kindergarten job at, for Bauer. I called Josh, I was like, Josh, I got a great candidate for you, call her, you're gonna do this. And then she subbed the next day about just happened to be, and he's like, yes, this is awesome! So again, meant to be, at Bauer. Next, we have Carly Taylor. Carly is an appliance grad. She just got done student teaching in Kenilah, stayed the whole remainder of the year. She's also gonna be in a resource room capacity at Riley Street Middle with Lauren. Then we have Sabrina Byrd. Sabrina, student taught at Riley in the English Department with Molly Geickelman this year. And she also did some long-term studying at Baldwin, or Baldwin Middle School for math, and then she finished the year at Lower as an EL sub. So we've been, you know, just using her in all capacities, so we're gonna give her a job at Riley in the EL aid department. And finally, we have Ms. Tara Rex. Tara has been, oh my gosh, she's been the school mom at Forest Grove, she's been a para, she's been a building sub, and this year, John and I, I think it was like, the day before school started, a PE teacher resigned. And so he's like, I got a great building sub, I'm gonna call her and see if she'll do it for us for a little bit while we figure something out. So we called Tara. Tara did it. Tara, and then in December, I was like, Tara, do you like it? And she's like, yeah, but I don't know if I'm ready to go back full-time. I was like, okay, no problem. And then come March, she was like, hey, I renewed my teaching certificate, let's go. So we're very excited that she has been a PE teacher at Forest Grove. Next year, she's gonna be at Lower and Upper in a PE capacity, and she is just a dynamic personality, great with kids, and we're very excited to put her permanently in this position. And there you go. Those are my 22 recommendations. Thank you very much.
All right. So we have that the board approved the following certified hires, as presented by Ms. Ann Armstrong, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources. Motion on the table?
I'll move that.
Support from Mark. Moved by Mark.
Second.
Second by Ken. Any discussion, any questions?
Just a quick, questions to clarify, these are all either positions that became vacant or new positions?
Yeah, there's very, there's just a few new, but most of them are just, were from vacancies, sorry, yeah. We had seven vacancies from the fall that we never permanently hired, and a lot of them are from there.
Other questions? Right, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. All right, motion passes. Welcome to all the new teachers. We look forward to seeing you in August.
Can I, and just ask Dan one question? And do we have all of our positions filled now, or are you?
That's a great thought. No, yeah, but we, we are doing really, really well, really, really well.
All right, next up, we have a couple administrative hires with Dr. Vanderjack.
So I'm gonna just turn it over to Mrs. Taylor to start with our first administrative recommendation to the board, and then I'll follow up.
Looking to see, I'm looking to see if she's here.
I don't think she's here, but understand.
I don't think she's stuck in yet. So my recommendation this evening for our EL facilitator position is Ms. Amy Dittmer. She is probably tied up with a newborn baby right now. She was planning on coming, but we know how newborns change plans for us quickly. Amy has served as the EL facilitator and teacher last year was kind of a pilot role, as we know our EL population is growing. And so she, this past year, served as a part-time teacher, part-time kind of facilitator. She was taking over a lot of the equitable intake meetings, as we were growing our capacity to support families who were new to the district, and oftentimes new to the country and new to US schools. And so her role is really also growing into a space of not only supporting EL teachers, but also supporting all of us as administrators and teachers as we grow our capacity to support EL students, as our population, as you may remember, has doubled in about five years. So I'm very excited about this position. She comes with many years of experience in teaching EL, and has just done a great job leading. She's passionate, knowledgeable, extremely skilled in the area of instruction.
I think she just walked in.
And it looks like she's walking in. Oh. Looks like maybe she left the baby with her husband. So I'm just thrilled to be able to recommend Amy to you this evening to work in the capacity as an EL facilitator.
So we have that the board approved the recommendation to reassign Amy Dittmer as the English Language District Facilitator, as presented by Amy Taylor, our Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction.
So moved.
So moved by Andrew.
And I'll support that.
Support from Dawn, I heard Dawn first. All right, any questions for Ms. Taylor?
How old is your baby now?
He has two months.
Two months, oh.
He is coming.
As long as he's not in the car.
Yeah.
Well, congratulations.
Any other questions? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. All right, motion passes. All right, Dr. Vanderjack.
Our next administrative recommendation, as you know, with the 5'6" building opening up in the fall, we have Mrs. McLeod will take over as principal. And I, I know Mrs. Hordisky's not here, but she's gonna move over to the Assistant Principal role. Did I say Mrs. McLeod, did I say that right? Well, I gotta look over. Yeah. And then Mrs. Hordisky is moving over to the 5'6" building assistant. We had a vacancy at Baldwin Middle School. After the great work from Mrs. Armstrong and her team, and a lot of, not only administrators, but several teachers from Baldwin Middle School, our recommendation tonight is Mr. Clint McDowell to be the next Assistant Principal. Very similar to at least one more staff member. We went to Sparta to grab somebody to say, hey, will you come back? The good news is, Mr. McDowell's commute tremendously got a lot shorter, hopefully. He lives in Hudsonville. He has two graduates from Hudsonville Public Schools. He has one that is still at the high school here. Did attend, his boys did attend Baldwin Middle School, which is where we'd like to place him as the Assistant Principal. He started a non-traditional career in education, really working more in the, more of the physical therapy, in that medical world, between Blodgett and New Care Rehabilitation up in Rockford for about nine years before he got into education. And then spent time as a teacher and a dean, and then more just a dean, and then the last five years as an Assistant Principal at Sparta Middle School. So he's coming over to do a parallel position over here at Baldwin Middle School. You might recognize the name as a McDowell. His brother was an employee of the district also. So we're looking forward to seeing the amazing work that Clint can do over at Baldwin Middle School, and our recommendation tonight is to have Mr. Clint McDowell be the next Assistant Principal. I see him, he stood up a minute ago, he's waving, his wife is sitting to his left, we appreciate her being here also, because she will basically be your tremendous support next year as he works through this role, as you know. So that is our recommendation to the board this evening.
All right, so we have that the board approved the recommendation to hire Clint McDowell as the Baldwin Street Assistant Principal, as presented by Dr. Vanderjack. Would you like to move that?
So moved.
Ken? Support?
I'll support that.
Support from Mark. Any questions for Dr. Vanderjack? Okay, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. All right, motion passes to hire Mr. McDowell.
Welcome.
Congratulations. Okay, next up, we have our HEA teacher agreement.
So I'd like to ask Mrs. Armstrong to come up and say just a few words about the agreement. I know, Amy, you just walked in, you're, you're clearly welcome to leave at this point, you've been hired, so I feel bad, you walked in, you're like, okay. But another note, the HEA agreement, I do want to thank the work that not only Mrs. Armstrong does, but we have our HEA Chief Negotiator, Becky Skipper, Brad Naderfelder here from the HEA, from the President of the HEA, and it's just the work, the, the work that they do together on a daily basis. We're talking about yearly decisions right now when it comes to contract negotiations, but these conversations are ongoing, and the work that the, the three of them do, I know, I get a chance to spend a lot of time with both of them also, and, and just the work that they do on a daily basis. The numbers that, that Mr. Briggs continues to crunch to support the work that Andy does with them, and it's just a great relationship to have, and we want to continue to have that relationship. So tonight, Mrs. Armstrong's gonna talk briefly about the recommendation, I know the board has had a chance to hear this discussion, I know the members have all had a chance in our, our teachers union to hear about. I know the members have all had a chance in our teachers' union to hear about what this recommendation looks like. I would like to talk to Mrs. Armstrong.
Thank you. And again, I also wanna thank Becky and Brad again for their great work on this. So what we are proposing tonight to the board is a three-year agreement. So this will be, we have one more year left in our current agreement, so this will be almost a two-year extension beyond that. And there's just three kind of items that this touches. One is Article, oh my gosh, I'm gonna say XX and Dr. Vanderjack's gonna make fun of me. I'm not good with numbers. Okay, anyway, so I apologize. But basically, it's department chairs. Some of the great work that our current department chairs do, as well as work within our student services and our curriculum department, has really stretched the leadership capacity for our current department chairs. And with PLCs and just the NTSS work that we've done, that Amy has done a great job of showing you all, really has kind of shown a light that we probably need to like split some positions into their own entities. And so that's why you see some additions of department chairs so that that work can continue to grow and evolve. So that's just within department chairs. As you see, we hired 22 positions tonight. And that next item is all about our hiring. We had kind of limited language in our current contract around hiring and how, and how we can honor steps and experience. And so the way, the way the language is now, it allows us to have a little more freedom without having constant conversations where I'm calling Becky and Brad, you know, all throughout the summer like, "Hey, okay, this is what I had. What do you guys think?" And so it will, you know, give them some time and give me some ability to keep honoring the current staff that we had, but also honoring the people that we're hiring with experience. And then finally, it's just the salary tables. And so our proposal is a 5% increase on next years and then a 4 and a 4 those years.
And just for clarification, the board had already approved in that negotiated contract of a 2% raise. So technically, there's a 3% additional raise for the staff next year and then a 4 and 4 next year. So it's a 3 and 4 and 4 request to the board. Five total, but it's additional.
Yes. All right, so we have that the board approved the HEA teacher agreement as presented by Anne Armstrong, our Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources.
So moved.
Support.
All right, so we have Andrew and Dawn. Any questions for Ann?
Just a job well done, job well done, bringing Ann into Becky and Brad. We appreciate the partnership. We've always had a great partnership with the HEA. We don't always agree. Sometimes we have to come to resolution on things, but we respect the partnership. We appreciate your professionalism and everything you bring to the district. And again, thanks, Ann, for all the work and the backup that Pat supported. Just a really nice job with this. We appreciate it.
Job well done. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. All right, it's approved. Right, next up, Dr. Vanderjack, our board policies.
Sure, we have seven policies that the board has a chance to go through the first reading. Did not receive any requests for changes or questions regarding the policies. So instead of going through all of them, I'll simply say it's the same as the last time I went through them. So that is our recommendation tonight.
Great.
Unless you'd like me to go through all the policies.
That's okay.
One, I'm talking to people down here.
That the board approved the second and final readings of the following board policy additions, revisions as presented by Dr. Vanderjack. Would you like to move that?
I'll move that.
Moved by Mark.
I'll support.
And support by Nick. Any questions for Dr. Vanderjack on the policies? We've all had the opportunity to deal with them. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Report items.
So the first report item we have tonight is an update on our, I'm gonna say this word, the COVID District Building Progress Report. It is still a requirement. I'm gonna ask Mrs., I know she's gonna do this quickly, so I'll turn it over to Mrs. Taylor.
Yeah, okay. So really, there's two items that I'd like to just draw to your attention. So by statute, we have to report no later than the final day of school on the benchmark assessments that we provide. So two items that I'll draw to your attention. This is kind of, we've been doing this for a couple of years now. One, you'll notice that there isn't any kindergarten data in each of the documents. And that is due to the benchmark assessments that we use are also, where we enter that data is on the report cards. And report cards are not due for about a week or so. And so that data, although this report needs to be posted on our transparency page tomorrow, I will post it as is and then update that data when we have that. So you'll notice that kindergarten data is missing. The other one that I'll draw your attention to is the high school data. That is data that we have been monitoring fairly closely over the last couple of years. And that connects to some of our alternate ed conversation. And so I wanted to draw your attention to that this evening. There will be further conversation about that at the work session. So you'll notice that our graduation rates, that is the data that we're tracking at the high school level. You'll notice that that data looks very good. 97%, 98%, 100% of our seniors on track for graduation at the end of the school year. The additional piece of data that we have really speaks to the number of students who also transfer out of the district when they are credit deficient. And so that will lend itself to some of the dialogue that will occur at the work session and some of our plans for alternative ed. So I just wanted to draw your attention to that data as well. We've been tracking data for a few years that when students are credit deficient, we don't have a lot of opportunities for them here in Hudsonville to recover quickly and catch back up on those credits. And so we're, we've been planning to ensure that we have programs to take care of our kids and ensure they cross the finish line in meaningful ways.
Questions for, it's not a board vote, just the report I want to share with you. If you have questions.
Dr. Vanderjack?
Thanks, Mrs. Taylor. Just a quick update tonight. I wanna share with the board, I think it's Becky.
We're about to embark on our next construction project, which is at Park Elementary. And this is a description, you've seen this before, but these are board, now that you've seen it, we'll share these with you, the administration building as well as at Park Elementary. It shows the new construction, now the interior classroom. We have the gymnasium going on and the park, the work that's taken place in the parking lot. You can see the remembrance parking lot. So I wanna share this with the board. Hopefully, this year, you wanna take a look at it afterwards, but you can also look at Park Elementary again if you want to. So exciting to put these up and eventually take the old ones down for the work that's almost done. I know Mr. Gillette's here. I wanna update the board quickly. This afternoon, a little afternoon, there was an accident on 32nd Avenue right in front of Forest Grove Elementary School. And when I mean right in front of Forest, it was about eight feet from the entrance of the building. A truck going north on 32nd, kind of a, let's say, three quarters of a semi-length, maybe two-thirds. Lost control. I don't know how exactly, they're still investigating. Took out five or six cars along the front row. Did not take out Mr. Gillette's car, but I don't know if he wanted it to or not. It was close. There was a gentleman that was pinned between two cars, who was taken to the hospital with non-life-threatening injuries. It spun around and was then ended up facing south between a bus that was parked to pick up kids and the building. It was about six to 12 inches from the bus, and it was about six to eight feet from the entrance of the building. It could have been bad. There are roughly 100 and some kids that are out in that area. At the end of the day, they happen to be really more towards the playground. Some are still getting, it was just getting out of school. This conversation could have been a lot different if something would have happened to those kids. Not a single kid was injured. All the staff was fine. The staff was amazing. Mr. Gillette was amazing with his staff. Mr. Petrolli is not here. Mr. Potman was our resource officer. The people on site were amazing. Mr. Briggs was very helpful with transportation. Mr. Matthews. There was just a lot going on. And I just wanna thank Mr. Gillette and his staff for their amazing work. And thank you that God willing, all our kids are safe today. And it could have been a lot different conversation than we think about that. And sometimes we take that for granted. So thanks to Mr. Gillette.
On a more positive note, this will be the last board meeting that we'll have in this facility for the, at least the near future. 32nd Avenue entrances to this high school campus will not exist over the summer. Starting Monday, they're gonna start to shut things down. This room will still be here, but there'll be no way to get here unless you take a very scenic route through the building. So we will be moving back to the boardroom for board meetings unless there is an agenda item or something that we need to move back to the media center. But this building will have a lot of construction. There are 74 days before school starts, and they're gonna use probably 75 days to get ready for school to start. There's a lot that needs to take place. So we'll plan on moving back to the administration building. The board, you'll have, you'll hear that. It will be posted on our website, but if people aren't here that wanna go to board meetings, they'll be back at the administration building. And you won't be able to get on this campus from 32nd. So if you wanna get to the old pool or this auditorium, you'll have to take Allen Street to the back to get in that. You can still get in the lots, but this whole front entrance is being torn up as they finish up the parking and the avenue to the fieldhouse at the end of the building here, going from there. I do wanna thank our administrative team. I know they've had not only a long school year, but it's been a long day. And they are here on the last day of school, when I'm sure some of your staffs have parties and get-togethers and celebrations, and you're here tonight. I just wanna thank them for an amazing school year. You are, I wouldn't wanna work with a better group of administrators ever. You run your buildings, you lead your buildings, and you do it on a daily basis. Our central office staff that do the same thing, I appreciate all your work all year from the amazing work that comes out of our Special Education Department through Mandy, through our curriculum office with Amy, through our HR, who you heard from both Amy and Ann tonight, with Ann with HR, Pat with Business and Finance. We have an amazing group of leaders in this district. And it takes all of us to run this place. And I just wanna thank them for their tireless efforts. And today was a great celebration, and no offense, John, until 12:05. And it was still a celebration at the end to know how it could have been, but it wasn't. And so it was a lot to celebrate and be thankful for. But I was in many buildings today from watching flags getting lowered to not being able to find a parking place within about three quarters of a mile to Jamestown Upper Elementary. It was just walking through the hallways at Riley and the celebration. Kids had a lot of energy today at the high school also. So it was a good day, and I just wanna thank everybody for a great. We've had a lot, this school year started with a tragedy at Baldwin Middle School with losing a bus driver. And it did not end in a tragedy today. So we had a, we had quite a school year, so thank you. And to our new teachers, I am so fired up to get a chance to see all of you. Just enjoy the daylights out of these kids. We have some amazing kids in this district, and you get a chance to love them up, teach them. And they will hug you and cry at the end of the year because they're gonna miss you, which I saw a lot of tears on kids today. I didn't see a lot of teachers crying today, but a lot of kids were crying today at the elementary level. But I just wanna welcome you to Hudsonville Public Schools. I'm looking forward to seeing you when we have new staff orientation. I know the board will be there at dinner also, get a chance to get to know you a little bit better. And just look for the amazing things that you're gonna do in your classrooms and with our kids. You have put your time in from a, from an education standpoint, going through schooling. Some of you have come from other districts where you've kind of honed your craft a little bit. Now you get the chance to shine. So welcome to Hudsonville Public Schools. Best of luck, and I'm looking forward to popping in all of your classrooms just to say hi and hopefully read to a few kids here and there. So that is my update tonight. And our soccer team's tied 0-0. Which is soccer, it's 0-0.
All right, we will do a board roundtable. I'll start with Mr. Davis.
I'm all set, thank you. So I represented our board at the Ottawa ISD meeting on Monday. And our recommendation was to nominate Mr. Eicholt and Mr. Skipper for those two open seats. And the rest of the board, the rest of the members there also agreed with our recommendation. So I think each of them got 10 and 9 votes respectively, and the other two people had 1 or 2. So just wanted to report out on that. And then, last thing, today after, today before school and after school, we met with the summer science kids. So we'll be leaving in two weeks from Sunday to take 26 students out west for three weeks. So this will be my sixth year doing that, and it's always a joy and a pleasure to be a part of that program, so.
Did they all pass the running test?
They did, they did. They've got their tents, they've got their bags, they have to, so.
Did you pass the running test?
I did. So, so yeah, they got their tents, they got to practice setting those things up and all that good stuff. We're ready to roll, so good stuff. That's it.
As Dr. Vanderjack said, just welcome. Welcome to everybody, the new staff, the new principals. It's great to have you as part of the Hudsonville family. Really excited to have you here, continue our tradition of excellence moving forward. One thing I wanted to note, Bridge Magazine has been running a series of articles on general population decline in the state of Michigan over the past years. And I wanna spend a lot of time on this. Ottawa and Ken County fortunately are not part of that general population decline. We're growing. However, it still speaks to parents when they move into West Michigan, have a lot of choices. And between a lot of good districts in the area. What will continue to allow us to grow and be the best that we can be is enabling students to achieve their best through programs that we've implemented this year, through high academic excellence, expectations to achieve excellence. That's what will sustain this district in the long term. Supporting students to achieve their best and achieve, be it academic excellence or impersonal excellence in their lives. So it's an interesting series of articles. Again, we're fortunate to be growing, but we always remember that teachers, or excuse me, parents have a lot of options. So thank you for all you do. Thank you for a great year. We really appreciate everything you've done, and we look forward to the coming year. That's it.
Nick?
Yeah, just a couple highlights from the last couple of weeks. Aaron mentioned the girls' water polo team winning the six-state title in a row. That was probably one of the coolest sporting events I've ever been at. It was intense.
I did not get kicked off deck.
Well, but I wanna highlight, humor, somebody did. No, the way that our parents and our coaches and our players represented Hudsonville made me so proud, not just as a school member, but like as a dad of a kid. We played some arch rivals. It got really heated because the games were great. I would say we handled ourselves a little bit better because none of our parents got kicked out. And then last week, I had the pleasure of going to Cranhill 5th Grade Camp. With, it's been probably since I was in 5th grade, I don't go to Cranhill Camp. It was hot, it was really hot Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and dusty. It was still blowing dirt out of my nose. But it was so cool. It was South and Jamestown. There was a lot of kids. There's three 5th grade sections at South and five at Jamestown. But I think we need to do a board retreat there next year, okay? We probably can't all ride together, there's open meetings and stuff, so we'll carry them in there. But I'm like dead serious, this was, it's so cool to see the teachers and the kids interacting. We had a little guy in our room, we went, he was scared of everything, like literally everything. But at the end, we went through, enlisted all of the things that he tried for the first time. There's like 10 things he had never done in his life that he did in these two days at camp. It's such a cool opportunity that our 5th graders get to do in Hudsonville. And a lot of conversations, I think I counted 10 parents or teachers that came up and said, "Are you the next boss?" I was like, "Maybe?" No, but just really good conversations, getting to see the parents, the teachers, and the kids all interacting outside of their normal, their element. And we're really fortunate that our district allows this to continue to happen. It's been going on since I was a kid. I hope it continues for many, many years. It was, it was fun to be part of.
Dylan?
Yeah, I was able to attend probably a dozen or so open houses for graduates this year. And just so impressed by the attendance, by families, by teachers, and just highlighting some of the accomplishments of our students. I mean, I'm astounded every time. And not only are they very accomplished students, but they didn't know me from Adam because I was with Dwight on some of these. But they were so pleasant and were willing to tell me about what they learned and where they're going and why they're excited. And it just reminds me again why we need to be so proud of what we've accomplished here in Hudsonville and will continue to do. And for the new teachers, it was great to see so many of you as former grads. A lot of you with West Michigan roots. I appreciate you coming and sharing your lives with us.
You know, as Doug alluded through that, you were... You know, as Doug alluded, or Dr. Vanderjack alluded to earlier, the mere tragedy that we had today. And I saw the pictures on Channel 8 and on Channel 13 before it came today. And when you look at what could have happened, and through no fault of anyone, I just wanna thank the Lord for his mercy on this school district and what happened today. I'd like to thank John for his leadership, and I'd like to thank Dr. Vanderjack for his leadership. And just wanted to say how thankful I am to the Lord that you chose to protect all of these people.
Again, I just wanna welcome all of our new teachers and thank all of our teachers and administrative staff for really an awesome year. We're in a great district, and I hope you have a wonderful and relaxing summer. All right, I know Dr. Vanderjack is eager to get to Byron Center, so I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion from Mark, second?
Mark.
Second from Nick. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? All right, we are adjourned.